I'll call the meeting to order. The first item of business is the Pledge of Allegiance, and I'd ask if you could stand, if you're able, and join me.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody. Next item on the agenda is public comment. Does anyone wish to comment on anything not on tonight's agenda? Seeing none, I'll move down. Next on our discussion items, and Owen, you're up, my friend.
The annual talent show is being held tonight at 7:00 in the MHS auditorium. The price of admission is $5, and all the proceeds are going to benefit... The concert choir, looking forward to seeing all the talent on display. Last Friday, nine student council officers made the trek to Holy Cross to network, learn, and enhance their leadership skills. Thank you in particular to Mr. Brannigan... And Ian Gilson for planning and executing the event. And a word of congrats to Mr. Brannigan, as he will be inducted into the Special Olympics Massachusetts Hall of Fame at the opening ceremony at Boston University this spring for his work with Special Olympics through the school and with state student council. Tomorrow, the class of 2022 will be coming to tour the high school. We welcome these future sachems into our home. Student leaders from the high school will be leading them on tours. A thank you to Mr. Cicliano, Mr. Pelletier, Sean Rutledge, and Madison Walgreen for producing the "Choices is Yours" video to be viewed tomorrow. Also, thank you to Amanda Bacant, as she will deliver a speech to the class of 2022 tomorrow. Amanda and her team of freshmen are leading a set of orientations at the high school for students and parents in the NMS. One is Saturday, October 21st at 9:00 a.m., and another one on Tuesday, October 24th at 7:00 p.m. Yesterday, boys soccer qualified for the state tournament with a tie against Rockland. In football play is Rockland tomorrow to finish out their regular season schedule. Tomorrow is the MKG Family Harvest Dance from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. This is a great night of family fun for elementary schoolers, and the high school is sending student volunteers. And just a word of note, I've heard some great praise about the new website, and I've been using it more myself. Thank you.
Thank you, Owen. Does anyone have any questions for Owen? Owen, I know you have talent show tonight, so if you need to leave, feel free to go right ahead. Thank you. Does any member of the committee wish to bring anything up under reports? I do want to... Owen, I know that you mentioned it, but I think it's worth mentioning again. And we really want to recognize Paul. Paul's going to be inducted into the Special Olympics Hall of Fame from Massachusetts, and that's a huge honor for him. So, Mr. Brannigan, congratulations. Next up is Mr. Catino. And I should tell the committee, Mr. Catino was nice enough to send Mr. Lynch and I note recently, and he's asked us to be part of his executive board meetings, and so we're both going to do that going forward. So, thank you very much for that, Mr. Catino.
Good evening. So, yeah, that invitation, it was something that actually had been done in the past, and we kind of fell by the wayside for a little while with everything that's been going on, so I figured we'd extend that back out again so that you can address the E-Board, and figured it would be a good way to start off heading towards the next year where we begin negotiations again. So, that's where we're at. That's all I have.
Cool. Any questions? Any questions for Mr. Catino? Thank you, Mr. Catino. We're all looking forward to negotiations again.
Thank you.
Next item on our agenda is the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the committee. I'm here this evening to present my report, and my first report is a facilities update. And I ask that Mr. James Hutchinson, aka Hutch, come down, and he has a presentation with regard to a number of the projects that were completed in the summer, the Nichols Middle School Boiler, and the energy reduction plan, the green community designation application that we've been going through. And so, welcome, Mr. Hutchinson.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone. Just to follow up on some of the summer projects, which I had spoke about before the summer began, obviously. And we had a bunch of in-house things that we did. I have them up there on the screen. We relocated an art teacher at MKG and built some cubbies for her, and also the HBB art teacher, so they had some additional storage. Scott Beach, our electrician slash carpenter, did these cubbies that you'll see. And we have two classrooms at the Berklin, younger age kids that don't have any lockers in the vicinity of their classrooms. So, they... Both classrooms had cubbies built just outside their rooms for each classroom, painted and ready to go for those kids. They're actually using them now. And then, we have... While he was on the carpentry loop there, he did some storage in our copy room, which that typically would just be stacked on one top, on top of one another. And he also did the... With the one-on-one now, they're able to do a lot of their work inside. They were inside the boiler room at the high school. So, with the winter coming, it's nice for them to get in, and they have a big C-shaped workstation there that they can take the devices and be in one location with their parts and what have you. Again, some more storage. That one is down towards the lala wing in HBB. And then, also up behind the auditorium, we built some more storage there for the girls in the office. So, there were a lot of people on the wish list looking for some more, but that's about it for now. We've got to do some electrical. At the high school, we took a large space, which was basically just an open waiting area, and we built... We had built two office spaces there for two counselors, and then that waiting area there. So, that's right beside Berry's Corner over at the high school, and gives them some privacy for those two teachers, counselors. The pool pump, we had a 26-year-old pool pump that was on its last leg and peed it out just about the last week of school last year. So, we sent it out to be rebuilt, and the cost was decent, so we actually purchased a second, brand-new pump, which is that pump there. And we have the rebuilt 26-year-old pump on the shelf as a backup, just in case in the middle of swim season. The pump goes down, we can... Maintenance can go in there overnight and replace it, which we didn't have that option before, so... And in this school here, we have, as you probably know, the three new boilers are in place. They are vented, gas piped, electrical was completed today, and we have Veesman coming in on Monday for a startup, and then we'll also do our training session with the maintenance department and the custodial department. So, those are ready to go. Fortunately, the weather has cooperated so that we haven't needed them. Also here, we've been taking sections of the school classrooms, and then the bigger clusters, A, B, and C, removing the original carpets and putting VCT tile in. So, we did... This summer, we did more than typically we've done. We've usually done two classrooms or a classroom in a cluster. We did three classrooms, and this is the B cluster on the lower level. So, again, this summer, and possibly during the Christmas break, we may try to get another classroom done. But it's a much neater space, easier to keep clean, and obviously, an almost 20-year-old carpet causes a problem with allergies and what have you. So, that's it for that. I just wanted to go over a couple of other things. We have, and this is kind of leaning towards our energy plan, we just recently finished up today at the Berklin, they have a number of light poles on the back. There are actually 11 poles altogether that light the parking lot. They haven't worked in approximately seven years. So, our electrician, Scott Beach, was able to locate the power source, and we're going to be able to get seven of those light poles back online with new LED fixtures. So, it was a safety concern, especially with basketball coming up. So, that was something that we finalized today, and then we'll get some pricing on the LED fixtures and change those out. That'll be a huge difference out back. And I don't know if you remembered, but at the high school also, he was able to change 300-plus light bulbs from the T-12 to the T-8, which is a saving. They had to be changed because they weren't working anyways. Along with that change out is a replacement of the ballast. So, that's an energy savings for the high school. So, we'll continue to keep that high school up and running. There were two air conditioning projects. At the MEK, we replaced... Had the recoil for the cafeteria replaced. And then here, the third-floor computer room, which has a dedicated system, we replaced a condenser there as well. So, those projects are 100% complete. Moving forward, we have the energy plan. I don't know, Mr. Stevens, if you want to come down and join us for this?
Prior to that, Mr. Hutch, if you wouldn't mind sharing some of the monitoring we've been doing in terms of air quality in all of our buildings, or the number of our buildings?
Yep, absolutely. So, a couple of years back, we had what was an issue with air quality in the Berklin school. We did some substantial testing, found what was an old roof leak, cleaned the area, insulated the area, and then did an air quality test there. We did a follow-up test back in June, so we'll do that moving forward every year. Change of seasons, we'll do an air quality test in that school where it was a problem. We actually did the entire complex in June, so we did the Berklin and this school here. We had an air quality test done on the lower level, 8th grade here, and those reports came back. Mr. Gagin has them, and those came back, what we had hoped, clear. So... And we're in the process, just today, we had a classroom that there was a question about maybe having a problem in that room, 212, and that air quality test was done today. Typically, it's about a week turnaround, and then I get the results from that, so...
That was the high school?
At the high school, I'm sorry. Yep. And that building is quite porous, so when the rain hits it on the north side there, it tends to come in as well. So, we did locate, prior to doing the testing, some pointing that can be done, and that would eliminate that water from going from the third to the second, and eventually to the first floor, all behind the glazing in that, so you don't see it until it starts to calcify on the inside brick. So, that air quality test was done today on both of those levels, second and third, and then they were treated with sporoecin to... If there was any mold or mildew there, we'd treat it and be taken care of, so...
And finally, Jim, we had an issue yesterday with a four-inch sewer main at the high school, that we had talked about the systems at the high school and how they're failing through the years. This was part of a 1,000-foot system that just happened to be above ground, but it did burst?
Yep, so it was a 10-foot sewer main that was in the custodial storage area, so the second-floor sewer line. And custodians weren't there, so they didn't know, but it had a, what was a 10-foot crack, and the people on the second floor don't realize it, and they're utilizing the bathrooms, and it's coming out of the pipe. So, Tuesday night, we took that 10-foot section and a little bit more and replaced it, but once again, that's the state of the piping in the building. It's not that it's defective piping, it's that it's cast iron pipe that has given way. So, hopefully, that doesn't happen over the computer room.
Just a brief comment on that. We're fortunate to get 47 years out of a piece of pipe where there's a town, two towns over towards the ocean, that is replacing a $50 million sewer main that is 14 years old, because the sewer was actually reacting with the inside of the pipe. So, we're fortunate to get 47 years out of something sometimes.
Yeah, that was a lengthy crack, and because of the blockage, it had gone unnoticed, some of it, but then, once the blockage came, which was about 75 feet downstream, that pipe filled, and of course, it had pressure on it, and it was quite messy. Mr. Brannigan?
Thank you, Sue. So, on to the energy reduction plan, and go ahead, sorry.
I think it's important, too, is previously, a lot of these projects, we would have had to go outside for, because we didn't have an HVAC person. We didn't have a person who does plumbing. There were certain specialties that we're able to keep inside with your department that in the past, we would not have been able to do.
Yep, and we've been fortunate to have money. I mean, in the past, there wasn't money to do these things, but as you can see, Mr. Beach is talented carpentry as well, so...
Absolutely.
I mean, those are things that, obviously, like I said, it's a wish list, and when we can give it to the teachers and faculty, then we do, and that's been huge to build those things. Those kids had coat hooks. They didn't have anything. They just hung their backpacks on a coat hook, and that gave them a place with a name tag where they could put their belongings, so that was big.
Any other questions, Mr. Hutchinson, before we move on? I should have asked that first, apologize. As we move on to the energy reduction plan, we have with us this evening a familiar face. Jeff Stevens is the chairman of the Green Committee in the town of Middleborough, and has worked tirelessly for a number of years, probably all of his adult life on conservation efforts. And he is sort of the lead person in town to begin the process, and now that we're fully involved in the process of an energy reduction plan, that we're going to submit to the Department of Energy Resources and to get into a pipeline of possibly some substantial money coming to the town. So, welcome, Mr. Stevens, and you can certainly, if you'd like to grab the mic and sort of...
A couple of quick things. First of all, very much appreciate the support that... I'm the chairman of the Green Energy Committee, is the full name of our town committee that worked on this, and has been heading us towards hopefully becoming what is called a green community. And the green community is the designation of Department of Energy Resources, and clearly, its focus is having a town, especially town government, do its best to be as reasonable and careful in the use of energy as it can be, and to do everything we can do to reduce energy use. And we've had basically five little hurdles to jump to become a green community, but the largest of those hurdles is this energy reduction plan. And it is the town of Middleborough's energy reduction plan. It is not just a Green Energy Committee or just the school departments. It is all-town buildings is what the focus of this is. And basically, this plan, I want to give some great credit to folks who have been involved in really developing the plan, and some of it has been the cooperation and support of the school department. We appreciate that very much as well. But Evan Malillo, who is the assistant to the town manager, has been a major player in the development of the plan, a name that I think you guys around here may very well know, because he's now gone on to college, but Andrew Sukforth is a graduate of Middleborough High School, I'm quite sure, and he's been very, very much involved in development of this plan. And then, I'm very pleased to say, we have a present member of the high school community, and that's Eric Jacobson, who's also been involved in developing some of the information that's included in this green energy plan. So, it's really been a cooperative effort, but the town manager's office is really organized in the plan, and we, as I say, very much appreciate the support and involvement of the schools. As I said, this is the last step in becoming a green community. We have to submit this in just a matter of days, actually. Hopefully, it goes past, because the next step we have to go is go to the selectment on Monday night, and hopefully, that would be approved, and then be able to go on and be submitted to become a green community. If we become a green community, there is an initial grant of $180 to perhaps as much as $200,000 that would become available to apply towards the projects that you will see in the energy reduction plan. That is only the beginning of opportunities for other funding towards energy reduction. And so, there are then a goodly number of competitive grants that come out every year, and they vary year after year as it goes on. And so, during that time, hopefully, there'll be a goodly number of opportunities to apply the money that is available through Department of Energy Resources that, right now, we have not been able to access, even though we actually, as we pay our electric bills and other things, some of our funding from... That has gone to support Department of Energy Resources. Now, hopefully, when we become a green community, those funds will be available to us, first in that initial grant, and then as part of those competitive grants. So that for years to come, hopefully, if this initiative keeps going, and I see no reason it wouldn't, we'll have opportunities to work on projects in town buildings. This five-year plan, and that's what the plan is, is a five-year plan, hopefully has us achieving a 20% reduction in the amount of energy that the town buildings use. Schools play a major part of that. Obviously, the greatest square footage and everything else of town buildings is in the public schools. And about 2/3 of the reduction that is in your five-year plan is built around improvements and reduction in energy in school systems. So, that's no small part of this, so we hope it's going to be a substantial step forward. The plan overall would call for about a 24% reduction in five years, if you take the reduction in energy use by all-town buildings. Now, there are a couple of things that don't get included, new things, for example, the high school, things that are going to come on as new buildings, which reduce compared to a baseline year of what exists already. So, all in all, we'd ask for your support in this. Appreciate the support we've received from staff, and as I said, the support of the town manager's office in getting this plan put together, and let's hope it moves forward. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Stevens.
So, just one other thing on that. The baseline is 2015, so anything we've done, I'm just speaking on behalf of the school system, goes towards that plan. So, we've had some considerable savings, energy, gas, and electric along the way since '15, which I think you have in front of you there. So, we've got a very good jump on that 20%.
Just a question. So, who makes the recommendation as to where the funding goes? Is that through the capital planning committee that comes to town meeting that will make the recommendation where this initial funding source, or...
Initial conversations have been with the capital plan, yep.
Thank you.
Other questions?
This is on our agenda tonight as an action item to vote to approve this plan. Yes.
I move that we, the Middleborough School Committee, vote to adopt the energy reduction plan as part of the town of Middleborough's Green Energy Community's application for designation as presented this evening.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion. Can't emphasize enough what we appreciate the Green Committee doing and working hard. And also, as... This is a great... You put in here the listing of everybody working on this particular project. I know Eric, I believe Eric interned in the town manager's office this summer or this fall from the high school, and so, you know, we thank him as one of our representatives who's here, but I know Kathy's involved in this, and we really appreciate it. And I just wanted to say that, that, you know, over and over again, people in town do extra, add to their job descriptions at times, and pick up things in order to help out the community and find ways for the community to get money, and we really appreciate the hard work that you guys put forth. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, if I might, I'd also like to thank the town manager's office, and we talked about Evan, and we talked about Andrew and Eric. Andrew's a college intern, Eric's a high school intern, with Evan, the assistant, have coordinated that, but also with the cooperation of the gas and electric, who have worked with us on this project. Seth Pickering for the Department of Energy Resources has been a great consultant with regard to this project, and obviously, Hutch and Kathy have been working hard to get our portion of the plan integrated into the town portion of the plan. So, thank you all very much on behalf of the school system.
Any further questions or comments? I have a motion on the floor to approve. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Thank you very, very much. Yes.
We request the superintendent of schools to send a letter stating that the school committee adopted it unanimously, which is a little change from what's in our packet, but I'd like the unanimous to be in there if we could.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Discussion. Hearing, now those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Again, unanimous. Thank you very, very much.
I will take care of that tomorrow.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thanks, Hutch. We are moving on in my superintendent's report and invite Mr. Paul Brannigan down to the mic. Mr. Brannigan, he is here to present briefly his Middleborough High School Accountability Plan for 2017, 2018. Mr. Brannigan has had a cold for about two weeks, and he's slowly coming out of it, but he is coming out of it, which is great. Thank you, Mr. Brannigan. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you. I have a voice again. Thank you for letting me come and share with you just some of the highlights of the accountability plan for the high school. This is the fifth document that we've sent to you since we started creating these at the high school. And each year, they change a little bit based upon the needs of the building, but also the direction that the school would like to take for the community, that this is a document that you can find on our website, so that if you wanted to go and look to see what we're holding ourselves accountable for, then you can see exactly what it is. Just for the school committee to know that this is a document that takes a year to write, and what I mean by that is, is that the document that I shared with you a year ago became the work of last fall. So, using the document that you have, we will actually take this fall and assess this document of our goals throughout the entire fall semester. So, the things that we're doing, the calibration that needs to be done, the assessments that we need to be doing, and all that in between, to make sure that what we say we're going to do, we're doing it. In January, the entire instructional leadership team, we've been able to have a full day, professional day, to take the entire team together to do a full analysis of this document, and then begin the process of saying, where do we need to be going? And then, the spring semester becomes the writing of the following year's plan. So, this document is written by the content areas, and then, basically, we come together as a full faculty, put it together as one document, and then we vote on it to make sure the fact that we are supporting what we're holding ourselves accountable for. What's important for the committee to know, that this year's plan is a universal plan with every content area that has a focus on literacy. Our literacy plan that we launched last year became really a work in progress, and the voice that you see in this document is really looking at literacy from the lens of every content area, with a focus on reading, writing, speaking, and reasoning. The guiding question that every content area needs to use is how can Middleborough High School provide instructional resources and a personalized support that will allow all students to acquire, demonstrate, communicate, hone, and transfer the skills they need to be college and career-ready? That then becomes a springboard for the work. They start with a celebration in every one of these pages. You'll see the content areas celebrating the things that they want, that feel has been an important success in the year, but also the areas of focus that they believe really need to be, something that department needs to hone in on. And then, you'll notice the essential question that they use as their guide. The guiding question that, from the essential question, every content area must create a guiding question, and this really begins the work of creating their action plan, and then really their achievement goal. So, you'll notice in the department areas, you'll notice an achievement goal, and for math, science, and English, it really has the focus of MCAS, but also even beyond that, SAT, Advanced Placement, anywhere where they feel that we need to put an area of energy to. And then, you'll notice the SMART goals for the areas of the literacy plan. This is a document that normally we would send to you in June, but this year, we decided to wait, because we needed to get our MCAS data back to be able to go through and say, are those percentages correct? Are our goals correct? And then, be able to go back and look at the final data of our MCAS to be able to say, okay, I think our goals are in good form, to be able to move forward as well. So, we wanted to make sure, as we've always have, come to you with our plan, to make sure that this is what the high school's holding themselves accountable for, to help with our growth as a school. So, I can answer any questions that you may have or comments.
Mr. Brannigan, if I... Mr. Brannigan, if I might, you, on the back, you have a signature page. Could you just let the committee know who put this plan together?
Absolutely.
And let them know what their role might be? Obviously, we know you're the principal of the building, but if you go down and maybe just list each person and what their role is.
Absolutely, thank you. There's quite a team that is put together to create our instructional leadership team, and it's made up of the administrative team, all of the department chairs, and an identified teacher leader. So, in every content area, for example, Carolyn Gage from the futures program, Crystal Soares from English, Steve Chamberlain from math, Craig LaPerre, and Alan Harris from science, Dave DeFelice from foreign language, Alicia Lane from foreign language, Matthew Roberts from fine arts, and Bill Lawrence from physical education. This is the team that comes together to have a teacher leader, plus the content area leader, to be able to speak the voice of really what is instruction at the high school, and their main charge is to monitor and be the gatekeeper of the literacy plan, as well as the accountability plan. So, this is the team that will come together in January to assess what we've done thus far, and are we meeting our goals, and then begin the writing of the next plan for 2018-19.
Thank you, Mr. Brannigan, for giving us this information. An item that, it's kind of an offshoot of this, but as we're talking about looking at the question, when I look at the physical education question, when I always look at that, and go back to it, the essential question, go back beyond that. How can physical education department help the MHS students understand and improve fitness levels, et cetera? And one of the items that I will always keep talking about is wellness and beyond the actual physical activity, and I hope that it doesn't fit here, but when we start talking about the future, or we look at the school as a whole, and we look at the improvement plan, I'd love to start looking at alternative physical education classes. We've had a young lady come in here and keep talking about eliminating them so they can take out the classes. I'm not talking about eliminating them and take out the classes. I'm talking about either a nutrition class or a... I'm talking about either a nutrition class, or a strength and fitness class, or things like that would be, would be something that I personally would love to see in the future, if it ever gets, you know, when we start throwing ideas around. But I like, when I went through this, I do appreciate each, each piece, looking at it, and I just wanted to add that piece when I, because it's something I've really been thinking a lot about, and for my own benefit, too, I will say, I think of my own wellness, and, and if we can teach children to be well today, beyond this, we'll all be good. So I appreciate you listening, and I saw you take a note, and I appreciate it.
Yeah, what's important to note, too, Mr. Jiminoni, that this is the plan that actually couples the school improvement plan. So when the school council's writing that plan, this is a document that they refer to. So the wellness goal that you see in the school improvement plan kind of abuts a little bit to this, of really looking at actually, what is our curriculum, and how can we create programming in physical education that's beyond just the PE class per se, but really create a nutrition program and that kind of thing as well, to create those kind of courses? And I know that Mr. Sylvia, the new athletic director, and I have had some conversations about looking at how can we engage the students in PE in different ways beyond just kind of the programming that we're running? They embed it in terms of the units that they do, but at the same token, how can you create a section or a course that's really just about healthy living, or nutrition, or something like that?
I always appreciate this document because it's so professional and so clear. It's so easy for somebody to pick up and read and recognize, here's the goal, here's what we're celebrating, and here's how we're going to measure ourselves against our goal. And you and your staff do that every year. This is one of my favorite documents. Just one quick thing I appreciate, and this year's accountability plan is related to foreign language. I appreciate that essential question that you have in there, the, how can Foreign Language Department support building and district-wide learner growth goals while simultaneously enriching all students with foreign language acquisition and cultural awareness? Because I realize you're evaluating your offerings there, it sounds like, so I appreciate that this year, something that stands out to me, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brannigan.
Paul, before you leave, and if you don't mind me just moving ahead the agenda, because while Paul's here, one of, I'm going to skip to MSBA update, and the reason I asked you to be here, Paul, is, is this. At the previous meeting, I made mention of the fact that, again, people are saying things out in the community that aren't necessarily true. And one of my concerns is that, that when information goes out that's not true, that I think we need to address it. And so, one of the newest things that has popped up is that when we build a new high school, we will change the colors of the athletic department and change the Sachem name, and I was wondering if you could address that for us?
Sure. I would probably say to you that there would be no way that our school colors would ever change, and our mascot, that Sachem is such a part of this community. We just celebrated its 55th birthday yesterday as a school, that in, that when the Middleborough High School student body created their mascot of the Sachem, it's been something that has been the real foundation of that school for 55 years. And for us to even consider making any sort of a change for that, if anything, the identity of what a Sachem is, and the ideals of what a Sachem is when you walk our building, those are the ideals that are actually embedded exactly in the education plan for the building of a potentially new high school. So that Sachem would be something that would carry from this current building, if there was ever to be a new high school, it would go into that same building as well.
And again, just to the community in general, and we'll talk about this a little later, too, but, again, there's lots of, people aren't necessarily asking questions, just making statements, and I can't emphasize enough that they can call the high school and speak to you, they can call the superintendent's office and speak to the superintendent. Both my email and Mr. Jiminoni, who sit on the building committee, are on the school website. There is, there is the building committee website, which Brian will mention.
It's the building committee website? The building committee website is MHSbuildingproject.com, and if you click Contact, which is on the far left, I'm sorry, the far right of your screen, and you can put your name, your email, and your question, and we can get back to you. So if you put your name, email, and question, and as I mentioned the other night, if you really want to answer to a question, the place to do it is there, not on Facebook, because the, the building committee is a committee of the Board of Selectmen appointed by, and there is a, there is a social media policy from 2015 that does not allow any official capacity answers on Facebook, Twitter, Instagram, Snapchat, or anywhere else. All answers have to come directly from the school building committee. So I recommend click on that Contact, put your question in there, and get an answer if you truly want it.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
There's also been a good deal of rumor out there about a couple of other things, one being the, the preparation students are receiving for Middleborough High School, and the fact that somehow, the school is somehow subpar. I would point out to those folks, they can go on the MHSbuildingproject.com and look up the educational plan that is on that. In the first few pages, there's a summary of, of exactly where the high school has been and what it's been doing, and the progress the high school has made over the years. I would also say that, in response to that, myself, Mr. Brannigan, and Dr. Melanie Gates are going to sit down on Saturday and prepare, well, one page short of a summary of the great strides that Middleborough High School has made, under the direction of Mr. Brannigan and previous principals. And we're going to put that out there so that folks do know that it is a school that's advancing, it's advancing with each year. And I have talked about this before, but 2008, we had about, I think, eight or nine, 11 qualifying scores in AP. Last year, we were up to 170, and, and so, there are some numbers that are staggering of the improvements that we've made, and I don't ever want the high school and the high school staff to feel somehow diminished by what's written out there on Facebook when it's simply not the truth.
If I can just add to that, I would also recommend people walk through the high school, because once you walk by the Wall of Honor for the students who've graduated and gone to the military, you can walk a further, a little further down the hall, you can walk past the auditorium, and see the pictures of each and every student and where they're attending college. It's, it's an impressive lift, and it's, Paul, is the map of the United States still up with each and every place that the children are going? It's impressive, and that's just from last year's class, graduating class. And I know, you know, that the people who are involved in this year's graduate class are just in the process of putting their applications in, and they're going to impressive places. And, and that's the piece that I want people to realize. It's, it is not difficult to find answers. You just have to ask. What's difficult for me is to be a part of this process for almost three years now, and to essentially watch absurdities get thrown out there as fact and truth, when, and I see the comments that are made in the sense that say, okay, well, this doesn't seem right, but, okay. Well, if it doesn't seem right, just ask somebody, and they can explain to you what's going on. Again, other things that have been made, over and over again, people have said that they're disappointed that the new high school won't be a green high school. Nothing could be further from the truth. In order to get into this process and be a part of this process, we have to be at a level of silver in order to build a new high school. The second one is, they talk about the maintenance of the school, and somehow, the maintenance of the school has deteriorated over a period in time. It is not the maintenance of the school. In order to get into this program, we have to prove that we maintain the building, and we have to prove that we have a plan to maintain it in the future. What's happened is, the building envelope is in horrible shape because it's finished, it's time. It's, oh, by the time this project will be done, it will be 50 years old. As we've said over and over again, this building will have served us extraordinarily well, but will have been the longest-serving high school in Middleborough. It's time. And again, what it always came down to, the rest of us, and I, I thank Mr. Belanger today, who put in the paper, the article about why not renovation? We looked at renovation. To renovate the, the current high school just to bring it up to code is $65 million, and does not carry any additional funds from MSBA, because it doesn't add educational space. It just brings it up to code. We looked at two additional renovations. Each of the renovations were within $2 million of building a new high school, and that $2 million difference would have meant a longer period in time to build the building, and displacing kids and putting them in the, the fields in portable classrooms. They would not have gone to, to Middleborough High School as a building, they would have gone out back into classrooms, and that didn't make sense to us with the money. Yes.
As I, as I get, as my wife walks up to me and says, did you read this? And I say, no, I didn't. I, I start reading what she hands me, and I, dare I say, I am a little insulted at times, because to think that, I mean, I myself have only been involved with this current process of this high school for two and a half years. Paul's probably got almost 20 years in this process, thereabouts, that you've been in Middleborough and have seen it, but more, more so that we've been working on this for so long, and the, and the comments and questions that have come up are questions that we have vetted ourselves. We've sat in a room, we've thrown everything against the wall, we've done everything we could to, you know, to, to do what we can, to, to do it, dare I say, as cheap as possible. My head was doing it as cheap as possible, and there have been meetings that I have gotten angry. attest? Yes, okay, because I've tried, different things, and I, I'll tell you, as I look at it, this is the, this plan that is being put forth on November 4th for a vote, is the plan that is, to me, it is the best plan that we can do in Middleborough for Middleborough. We have to do something to the school. And so on, so one of the comments was, why can't we just paint and paper the place, for all intents and purposes? $65 million to paint and paper? And that's all it is, is paint and paper. Bring it up to code, bring, redo the building envelope, you know, people say, oh, you're not maintaining the bricks on the, on the bridge. We're doing what we can, and the problem is, is every time you do something, somebody else will say, well, why are you spending money on it if you're just going to throw it away? So it's a catch-22, and I've watched both of those pieces, and even to the point of the capital planning committee has stopped looking at capital for us at the high school. In fact, we asked for some things this past year, and they said, no, the high school plan is moving forward at this point. So we're not even getting capital funding for improvements at the high school at this point, because they think, they think it's going to go a certain way potentially, so they didn't want to spend money. So this plan, November 4th, that people are going to be voting for, one, one way or the other, I know how I'm voting, but it, it is the best plan, and it's been, when I say thoroughly vetted, I couldn't, I've never been in a process that's been this battered around so much, and I, I just wish people, if they have questions, ask the people who can answer the questions. For those who, like I said, who don't want answers and just want to comment, that's fine. I respect certain positions and completely understand their positions, and, and I'm not, it's not personal, but what I don't want is, I don't want people to outright lie. As I always say, and people don't like it, there's a difference between ignorance and lying. And the difference being is ignorant is you just don't know. Lying is when you know, and you've just tried to fool people and say things. So I just wish that people, if they have questions, come to the right space and get those answers.
And that's a piece that I want to say to people, you know, I've been on town committees since the day I turned 18. A lot of people have put in a lot of hard work. We thoroughly recognize and respect the fact that people can't attend every meeting, people can't watch every meeting on TV, people can't go to the website and read anything. We respect that people have questions, and when people have asked their questions, we've answered them. We are more than happy to talk to people on the street. I will be around town to, on Friday at 5:00, if downtown hall, down by the center of town, so if people want questions answered, they're more than welcome to come up to me and ask. We'll do that. We expect that. What, what I can't expect and don't expect, especially from this community, is, is the idea of absurdities going out as fact, when it's, it's just, in a lot of ways, it's hurtful to people, and it's hurtful to people who have worked very hard to do what they do. And, and that's what bothers me. And so, again, as Brian said, and I think everyone here said, there are multiple, multitude ways to get in touch with somebody and ask you a question. And I will be the first one to get mad at somebody if they don't answer the question. Sometimes we don't have an answer, and we have to get it. But your questions get answered, and that's the biggest thing, and I just can't, you know, the other thing, too, is, we don't have a meeting until the next, till after the election is another next meeting. It is my intent purpose to go to every selectman's meeting to make sure that if a new one of these ridiculousness pop up, I'm going to address it at the selectman's meeting, because I will not allow them to go unchallenged in the community.
Mr. Chair, there are, there was one point that came out over the past weekend that is factually based. The question came out about the, the enrollment of the building that we're building. We are building a building for 720 students, there's no doubt about that, but we are told we can only build a building for 720 students. The MSBA is our partner in this building, they originally told us 684 students. We argued, we went to them, we had plans of apartment complexes and places and buildings and subdivisions that were going in, and they said, okay, 720. But they have a formula, or three formulas they, they use, they sat down with us for about an hour and a half up in Boston one day, we asked for a special meeting, we sat down with them, we pleaded, we begged, we said, we have 70 square miles here. There's so much potential for build-out, and they said, the enrollment in southeastern Massachusetts is going to go down such that in 10 years, you will only have a high school with 720 students max in it. That's our prediction based on formula. So there is no turning back on that, there's no negotiations, there's no pleading or begging that we can do that we haven't already done. The only thing they do is they allow you, or they force you to make a space on the side of a building that if there needed to be an addition on, we could do it, but if we did it, we'd have to build it ourselves as a community. That does not come with MSBA support as much as I understand it. So that did come out the other day, and that is factually based, that there, we are building a building for 720 students. What we did do is, they told us that we could only build an auditorium for 430 students or somewhere, I think that was the original number, and back in the day, there was no arguing that either, but they did relax on that, and this year, we're one of the first buildings that are able to build, I think we may be the first building, that are able to build a building on an auditorium that will hold a town meeting, that will hold the student body of the high school for 740 or 750 students. So that was something that they did relax on, they did allow us to do, but it's also something that beyond those 420 seats, the Town of Middleborough has to pay all the money for. But it was in the visioning plan, we wanted that for the town, we wanted that for the community, we wanted that for the school, so that's why we pushed forward with that as a building committee, and said, that is a priority for this building, having an auditorium that can hold a town meeting, and that can hold the, the student population of the high school. So that is out there, it is not, you know, made up, it is actually a number, but that's the reason that we cannot build a school for 800, or 850 or 900, because the MSBA will not support it, and we simply can't do it, so.
The questions that fell behind as my wife brought it to me, well, we should be building for more, and then I have other questions or comments, we should be building for less. You know, both, both sides of it get argued, and, and the funny thing is, is we have to use what the state gives us. The state tells us the number, we argued it to be what we believe it really truly will be, and we got 720, which I think is a fair number for now.
And they do allow for a 15% build-out beyond the 720, so they're actually allowing us to build for 15% more than the 720 in the square footage.
So that's, that's how.
We actually have a building for a little bit over 800 students, but they do allow that for that.
But I, I do want to say, Paul, thank you, I didn't mean to keep you here, but we immediately texted each other when we heard the absurdity about Sachems, because I know, I know what that means to you. And I, I, you know, you and I have had conversations. The other thing I should tell people, too, is Paul came to me beginning of the school year, or ended last school year, because there was a bill in the House that was concerning Native American names. And I met with one of the ranking members of that committee, and his response to me was, we had a hearing, our biggest concern is the amount of money it would take to change schools. And I think, I, I think that what comes out of that, and Paul and I have talked about this, is each community has to look at itself, and look at what its logo is, and its, and its piece, and has to have an internal discussion about how, what they what they do with that logo. And, you know, I think it's important for people to go to games and see the respect that's given to the Satchem and how the kids of Middleborough are taught to respect that name and what that means and how much Satchem pride means for them. It is, you know, not a joke. It is an important piece of the everyday life of those kids. And that comes from you, Paul. So I did want to thank you for that too.
Anything else, Mr. Brand again?
Thank you, Mr. Brand again.
Thank you, everyone. Thanks.
Your extended stay.
Thanks, Paul.
Next on my report are the revolving accounts and we have a Circuit Breaker update from Kathy and also a Capital Plan update from Kathy. So Mrs. Piattelli, take it away. She's going to the center mic.
Thank you. So, thank you, everyone. At the last meeting, I did a small update on school choice. And I thought, and I asked Mr. Lynch and Mr. Young, "This is kinda crazy. Would I be able to present at every meeting or maybe once a month and kind of just give everyone an update on what the revolving accounts are?" So we had school choice last time and not just for Middleborough, but what it means for the state and how it works. So I thought, school choice is a very helpful, impacts our budget where it funds three teachers and some high school technology. And Circuit Breaker is probably our biggest one where the state reimburses us for special ed tuitions. So prior to Circuit Breaker in 2004, the state reimbursed districts in what was called a 50-50 account. They only reimbursed for residential tuitions. The state would pay 50% and the school district would pay 50%. So you could realistically have more kids and more schools but not getting any help from the state. So they realized that that is a problem. So what they did was they created the Circuit Breaker account. And now it includes both in-district students, out-of-district placements, day school, day school and residential school. So what, what they do is they take the district enrollment foundation budget number and multiply it by four. So for the FY '18, every tuition that we paid over $43,094 is eligible for a Circuit Breaker reimbursement. What that means is the state allocates a certain dollar amount to Circuit Breaker and it's, they takes, you are entitled to, up to 75% of the cost after the $43,000. And they always say it's subject to appropriation because it's, sometimes it's the first thing that gets cut. So when, at the end of the year, the Special Ed Office submits all of the claims on the claim form for all of the expenses that we paid the prior year. So in July 2017, Carolyn Lyons submitted the form for all of the payments we made in the '16, '17 year. And anything over $43,000 was considered eligible. The DESC does audit. Every three years, they go out to school districts. And I think since I've been here, we've been audited twice and it's been very clean. Because we do pay pretty much basically tuitions for students out of districts. So that's pretty simple. They come in, they see the tuition bill and it matches up with our claim. We don't know the actual reimbursement number that will be up to 75% until after our claim is submitted. So the state really does tell us, kind of budget conservatively, use 60% as your baseline when you're working with your budget. Because they don't want you to fall short. They pay us quarterly. We get our payments quarterly after they figure out what the number is. They also set aside $5 million from the beginning and they use that for extraordinary relief. So during the course of, say, this year, if our expenses exceeded 25% more than we paid last year, we would be eligible for relief. Because placements change all the time. Students move in and out and they need different placements. That process is done through February and March. Any remaining funds, if they do have any money left over from the $5 million that's not allocated to relief, they do send back to the districts in June. So we have, over the course of the years, received, you know, somewhere between $20,000 and $50,000 more than we had budgeted for. All the Circuit Breaker funds that are deposited into the Circuit Breaker revolving account with no further appropriation. And we do work it into our budget. We know that we have X amount of students and we'll hit the Circuit Breaker first and then go into the budget. Circuit Breaker funds are allowed to be carried forward to, for two years. You can either spend them when you get them, which is what we're doing right now, or you can hold them for a year and use them next year. Currently, we have 36 students. No, last year, we had 36 students out of district. Four of them were residential. 21 of the 36 were eligible for Circuit Breaker. So they were, exceeded the $43,000. This current year, we have 32 out of district, but we have seven residentials. And so 22 will be eligible for Circuit Breaker. We do intend to apply for relief because going from four residentials to seven is incredibly big jump. This is just a history of what we've received over the last few years. And if you see the beginning, we were getting almost $700,000. And then it drops down because everything ebbs and flows. You know, your students, they go in, they go out. Demographics change. So we're on the upside again. We haven't had the expenses to get the higher reimbursement. So here it is in a chart. And the green on the top of 2015 was, we did apply for relief that year and we did receive $298,000 because we have unbudgeted, unexpected expenses that happened that year. That's it.
Kathy?
Yes, Kathy.
Many understands. We are going from four residential placements to seven residential placements.
Correct.
That doesn't sound like a lot because it's only three children. Can you tell us how much extra that is?
It's somewhere between, it's about $500,000.
So half a million dollars for three additional placements?
So next year will be great when we get that reimbursement. However, we're, you know, we're patching it together right now.
But, you know, and I would add, and I'm not, in no way do I want it to seem like I have any problem with the placements or any problem with what goes on. It's just, these change to the point that, you know, we're, we're in a budget process that we have to make determinations in February. These, these placements came long after that February timeframe.
Absolutely.
And so we can't, you know, it becomes radically difficult to make changes and to, to move half a million dollars around in the budget.
You're correct. And the, the changes in placements happen like all year long. But those placements did happen late spring, early summer. So yes, we had no control over, we had that money because we had already set aside where we were gonna put our Circuit Breaker. And a couple of years ago, when we were getting larger reimbursements, we were actually holding a year. But then bottom fell out and we had to use two years. Now we're using one year when we get it. So it's, I said, next year will be great.
One of the pieces that you included in our documents is the, is really a great piece, which is the school finance Circuit Breaker, which talks about what the program is, which gives us individually a finer understanding of what the Circuit Breaker program is. I, I've, I've understood it and that the number that, that number's always a target, what, 42,000 this year? 43,000 this year. I, I've, I would say to every, everyone here, when you run into a legislator, this is the one item that I always bring up with every legislator. And I argued with the governor, the honorable governor, at an event because he told me that the Circuit Breaker was 100% funded. And I said, "You may be funding it at 100%, but we're getting reimbursed at 75%." So it's 100% of 75%, which is politics speak. And I told him that. We argued for about two minutes and then he finally said, "You're right." Because I am right. 75% after the 40, bless you, 40,000, 43,000 this year, deduction off of it. So that percent goes way down. If you have a $50,000 expense for a student, you're getting $8,000, $7,000, which really only represents a real small portion, not 100%. So I, I, the, the politics people that understand Circuit Breaker will try to talk around it. But I always say that if everyone said to every political person, "This is the one item that you really could focus on because it is the most vulnerable students too in our district." So we're not talking about trying to pay less. We just want to make sure that we have the funding for all the students, including our most vulnerable. And when I throw it out at them that way, they always, they wrinkle their nose because they have no answer to that one. But you're only giving 75 cents of the dollar after the first 42 that we pay. Or 43 this year.
Subject to appropriation.
Subject to appropriation. And there have been times that that number has been less than 75.
During the 2008, 2010, it went as low as 40%. So yeah, it's definitely.
And they were so proud to get it back up to 75. They thought it was 100% funded.
Right.
It really wasn't. That, that 100% is a, is a false nomer. But I would, I would say, any one of us that bumps into a legislator, it's the one thing that I always talk about. And I, I even talk about it to the, at the federal level to talk about it because maybe there's something the federal government needs to think about with, with funding to make sure every student gets an education. Although this is a state item and I'm not gonna get into the politics of it, but this is something that every student needs their education. Every student and, it, it's troubling sometimes when I see that $10,000 versus a $50,000 expense. Sorry, thank you. This is my soapbox, I'm sorry.
Mrs. Piattelli, she's gonna move on now to the Capital Plan update. I met with Mrs. Lyons the other day with regard to placements. And she has a new student who's, also has moved into town, which is potentially not accounted for on this list. So the beat goes on sometimes. So Capital Plan update, Kathy. Thank you.
So Mr. Nunes, when he became the town manager after his first year, put together a booklet and it's on the town's website. It's Capital Plan Report 2016, 2019. So what he does is he asks every department that's been the recipient of capital project money to kind of give just a status update on where that plan is. Last year, when I added to it, I took all of the projects that the maintenance department did out of our facility rental account. And he was very impressed with all of the work that we were able to do without going to the capital. So this is just the same plan going from 16 up through what we were allocated at the spring. So I forwarded that to Mr. Nunes. He will incorporate it with everyone else's and it will go back up on the webpage. So I just wanted you to see it before it goes out to the public.
I appreciate the, both of the presentations you made because I think as we navigate and head into the fiscal year 19, budget discussions, this is really important information for the community to understand. Certainly the Circuit Breaker, that's an issue every year. Something that's, you try to plan as best you can and you just, you just can't. And this document, I, I really appreciate that she put in here all of the things that the district has done and where we've been creative in pulling funding from and where those funding sources and where they were allocated to. This is a great document. And like you said, it sounds like Mr. Nunes appreciated seeing that as well. And I think that's, it's very important for the community to see we're not just running to the Capitol Committee with every need that we have. That we really get very, very, you get very creative. The district is very creative with the needs that we have and how we can accommodate those needs while being fiscally conservative. So, thank you. It's a great document.
Mr. Chair? I would, I would suggest that anyone who would like to see this report, when it comes out, it will be, the, the town manager always puts it, last year still on the website, so you can go look at it. But when you look at, the best part is the, the funding source. They always call it the financing piece. I actually think, I think it should be funding source because a lot of what we do is funded through the rents that we collect or other types of, it comes from indirectly with, with a, like, I think it was a kitchen piece that we bought a refrigerator. Or we did a refrigerator piece that came out of the revolving account from the school lunch revolving account.
Walk-in freezer and fridge.
The walk, exactly. So things like that. We, we do absolutely go to Capital Plan, Planning Committee. And I appreciate what they give us. And we have, I know we've purchased some buses in the past out of, at the end of the year, if we have a mild winter and we have a little heating money left over, we spend it on that. And I think town meeting appreciates that we say, "Yep, we don't need it this year. We have a little money left over." I think that's a good thing. So I, I appreciate this report and that you keep up with it. And I appreciate the town manager for putting that out there for the people to see how much we do out of our revolving accounts.
Mr. Chair, next on my line item here is the, a couple of things. The after-school enrichment program. I'm gonna get you a more detailed report for November 9th, exactly what programs are being offered in what schools. But I just wanted to tell you that each of our elementary schools has a very comprehensive after-school program going on right now for students that extends our school day in a number of enriching ways. Whether that be dance, drama, possible computer work, reading. There's all kinds of things going on. The Reading Raise Program continues with the Rotary. So we'll get a much, I'll have you a much more detailed plan for November 9th as to what's going on. Intramurals have obviously started here at the, the Nichols Middle School and that will continue. So I also want to take my item number seven, perhaps out of order a little bit. School choice, we're still working on the final numbers from October 1st. But since our last meeting, I think we've added possibly three, three additional students in school choice. So our numbers continue to go up in school choice, which is really good. A real positive piece to our school system. We're attracting these folks and, and hopefully keeping them. People that perhaps are moving out of town, who want to stay in because they, they enjoy the climates and they want to keep their students with their fellow students. And, and there are also people from other towns who are looking in from the outside saying, "Boy, I can do that now." We, we're offering school choice in grades one through, one through five, which we didn't last year. And we've brought in a lot of students. So pleased to report and we'll have better numbers when that October 1st number gets certified. certified. And with that, I would hand number six back over to you, Mr. Chair, the annual evaluation of the superintendent, which is consistent with policy CBI of the Middleborough Public Schools, evaluation of the superintendent, and the school committee will periodically develop a, a evaluation of the superintendent. So I turn it over to you, Mr. Chair, and-
Thank you very much. So just so everyone in the community understands, there are really two important roles that a school committee has. Choosing and evaluating the superintendent's schools and running the budget. School committees don't have day-to-day operations in a school, we leave that with the superintendent. And so this is an important night for us to evaluate the superintendent. We evaluate the superintendent on a report from the Department of Ed that they give us to evaluate. The superintendent is essentially one of only two people that I am aware of who has their evaluation done in public, the other person being the town manager. I am thankful for that reason, I am not a superintendent or a town manager, but I bring it up because it's, it's difficult at times and I appreciate going through this. So we're going to go through it. The other thing that I should mention is this school committee has been very, very good about making sure that the public gets to comment on anything, everything. The one item the public cannot comment on is the superintendent's evaluation, because it's an evaluation between the superintendent and the, the school committee. And also, if someone were to say something negative about superintendent, it would violate his rights. So this is the one time we don't do that and we don't do it because it follows Massachusetts' general law. And so I say that upfront, so people know. So I'm going to open this up to anybody, what I'd like to do is if no one minds, we can go over, I think it's probably best if we start if you, in my numbering system, superintendent's performance rating for standard one. Yeah?
Before we get started, we were just making the comment about, about what they, people outside can't say, we can say negative things about the superintendent here, can we not?
Absolutely.
No, no, we, we can if we choose.
Right. In lieu of, in lieu of the evaluation, absolutely, and I shouldn't have said that, but since it's a, a document between the superintendent and the school committee-
It's ours.
That's, no one else outside can do that. So I think it might make sense if, if no one objects to look at the, each one of the, the one standard and instructional leadership followed by management and operations, family and community engagement, and professional culture. And then we can go back to goals. Does that, that seem reasonable or people want to start with goals? Okay.
What page are you, what page?
Well, I have B five.
I do have like page eight of seven.
So.
Reading standard one, instructional leadership.
Page four.
So I want to thank, Mo made the comment two meetings ago and asked the superintendent to do a self-evaluation. So the superintendent did do a self-evaluation. In addition to his self-evaluation, the superintendent submitted to us a document that I will refer to, it's, it's between, it's sent to us, it's regarding his-
Goal achievement summary.
Evaluation. And I will tell the community, this, this is a listing from the superintendent of everything he did in order to meet his goals and other benchmarks throughout the year. So this document is about ten pages long for us to review and so I would congratulate the superintendent on putting this together because it, it really amounts to the hard work that you did throughout the school year for us. So I thank that for that. So without any further ado, I'll, I'll, I'll ask people about the superintendent's performance rating for standard one instructional leadership. I will open up to anybody who wishes to speak.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Jiminon.
I personally would agree with the superintendent on his needs improvement as he, as we go through it. But I, I do comment that his steadfast focus on maintaining forward momentum and though needing improvement, it should not be a detraction of his accomplishments. I wanted, I worded it that way.
I think I should have said something beforehand and I will. We're asked to base it on four different indicators. The first is an unsatisfactory performance, performance on a standard or overall that has not significantly improved, follow a rating of needs improvements or performance that is consistently below requirements of standard or overall is considered adequate or both. Number two is needs improvement developing. The key there is development. Performance on a standard overall is below the requirements of a standard overall but is not considered to be unsatisfactory at the time, improvement is necessary and expected. This is the key. For new superintendents, debut new superintendents as being in the first three years of being a superintendent. For new superintendent, performance is on track to achieve proficiency within three years. So I would tell you this, that our current superintendent is a new superintendent. Proficient is listed as proficient practice is understood to be fully satisfactory, this is the rigorous expected level of performance. An exemplary is a rating of exemplary indicates that practice significantly exceeds proficient and could serve as a model of practice regionally or statewide. And as with most, it makes it clear in the, in the comment section, we're asked to comment if, we're required to comment if we give a overall rating of exemplary, needs improvement, or unsatisfactory. Okay? And I also should mention that what happens is after we go over the individual ones, we take a vote in each subsection. I include everyone's evaluations. I will, to be honest with you, I will probably include the superintendent's evaluation, self-evaluation, and his listing as I did last year. And everything gets shipped off to the Department of Secondary Education. And there, I believe it's posted on the website if I'm correct at some point, or it may not have been yet, but that's what is supposed to have. So in the future, if somebody's looking for a new superintendent, you can see what his or her rankings are. So with that, I will go back to standard one, which is instructional leadership.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Ms. Ranko.
So I also agreed, first of all, thank you, Mr. Lynch, for, for, for the first time
And I just want to make a request, I, when I was doing the whole evaluation, I felt like this was one area that I felt least informed on.
this year, self-assessing using the same rubric that we have to use.
Not saying you haven't done these things, but maybe I just haven't seen as much evidence
I think it's also, I think it's very helpful in any profession to self-evaluate with the
as I have in the other areas.
same tool that the evaluator is using, just to make sure we're tracking on the same page.
So my request to, through chair to Mr. Lynch is maybe in the coming year, maybe if we
And I was encouraged by the end that I felt like during my evaluation it aligned very
can pick some of these assess, areas, like especially curriculum and instruction, because
closely with yours, which was encouraging. So for this particular one, I landed in the same place that you also landed during your
I feel like, you know, I know you're having meetings, I know there's stuff, I know what's
self-assessment.
happening, but not the results of the stuff I don't see.
And my comments, I thought, I, I thought I read somewhere in, in your other documents
So that's my, my request to you is to maybe see some of that over the coming year.
that for this particular standard, you're perhaps working with Dr. Gates to kind of
So when we sit down a year from now, maybe I'll say, yeah, that's right, you know, I
figure out if there's a way to track some of the data related to like classroom walkthrough.
can be more confident.
I would add that I would agree with what everyone said.
They give actually some pretty interesting examples of evidence that you might provide
I do want to point out that I, I do think in the subset areas, the one area that the
and I thought those might even be used as kind of guidance as you kind of navigate this
superintendent shines in is data-informed decision-making.
particular competency areas, maybe tools you can use to kind of incorporate and kind
The superintendent goes over and above to make sure decisions in this area are made, are data-driven and made on information from as many sources as he can get.
of guide you through working on this particular standard. But overall, when you look at the items, the sub-items under the standard A through
So I really appreciate that.
E, I think you're tracking right where you should be as a new superintendent and it's
And I think that, that, I've seen more in that area that in my mind pushes him ahead
a developing and emerging, emerging competency for you. So, thank you.
than a needs improvement.
Steve.
And I think he's far ahead, he's far ahead of that for a new superintendent in the three years and I, I do want to make that piece. Any other comments? Then if no one objects, since I think we're all in the same, it seemed to me that there is a consensus here. Chair would entertain a motion to rate the superintendent under standard one for instructional leadership for needs improvement.
So moved, second?
Discussion. And Mr. Lynch, I, I know that was part of your self-evaluation, but before we vote, I do want to make, open that up to you to see how you feel about that.
Well, my, my self eval is reflective of your eval of me in terms of someone that's developing in this area. When you balance sort of the leadership, educational leadership and the management piece of it, in the role that I'm in, sometimes that management piece and that day-to-day takes over and, and you sometimes get away from the curriculum instruction piece and rely more heavily on the principals to work to that end. And that's the model we're in, it's the model we've been in, I think, for a bit. So some of that ownership of curriculum instruction assessment evaluation piece does need to go back to me in terms of working with those folks. So it's definitely an area that, that I do feel I'm developing in, and I'd like to use that term.
Anyone wish to comment on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Opposed? It's unanimous. The second superintendent's performance rating for standard two is management and operations. Again, recognizing, I'll go first if no one minds, again, recognizing the piece that needs improvement is good for a new superintendent. I, I personally think this is an area in which superintendent has gone further than that, in my mind. In most of the subcategories, I picked proficient. The one subcategory that I picked exemplary was in human resource management and development. A superintendent has done an outstanding job. As I have said before and over and over again, it's one of the few districts that I know where the superintendent meets with every new hire and essentially, if you will, interviews them and has a conversation with them. I would also add that I have been impressed since he started with the superintendent's ability to take the people that works for him and expand their horizons and expand their jobs to show them that they, they can do other things and really, really shine under that. And so I think that, and also, as, you know, we know there have been issues with people. I think he's upfront, very decisive and makes good, strong decisions when a person comes forward that maybe can't continue with the district. And that's an extraordinarily difficult piece, but the human resource management is one in which I think you do a fantastic job and I do want to comment for that.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Ms. Ranko.
So I'll add to that, I actually, my evaluation was also similar to the superintendent's with the exception of one element, but for element two B, I also did rate him as exemplary, that's the human resources and management, management and development, for a similar reason. I feel like you really are exemplary in building capacity within the district. So within, with the current resources, the people resources that you have, what you've done to grow some of those folks and build capacity within the district. And not only does that have an impact on budget and people, but culture, right? There's a real, there's a real culture of kind of innovation and a growth mindset, I hear that all the time from your leaders and staff. So I definitely feel like Mr. Young, that you fall in the exemplary category for that particular piece. Also, two E, you had rated yourself as needs improvement and I, I wasn't sure why, I actually rated you as proficient here because I do, I do feel that that's the fiscal systems piece under this element. I feel like, you know, as the chair of the budget subcommittee for the past few years, while you've been the leader in the district, I, I feel like you're very proficient in that area and we, we have a really nice system for navigating that budget process. And one thing that you uniquely do is involve all of the administrators in that process. So it's very transparent, there's lots of dialogue that goes into that fiscal systems process. We give credit to Kathy as well, but it's not her evaluation right now.
But I might, I think that's probably why I put that sort of developing, I didn't look at it as needs improvement, again, I looked at it as developing. It's an area that, that I saw definitely coming in as an area and I admitted as such in the interviewing process that it was a weakness for me. I, I didn't know fiscal systems. I, I thought that I would be in a position where I, I have a brother who's a superintendent, who's a former business manager, I'd be on the phone with him all the time. I'm lucky to have someone with Kathy who has that local and local expertise, who has that history in the district. So I do think I'm developing in that area, but in terms of the budget process and going through the budget process, I really rely on Kathy a lot. So once I'm in, I'm in. And once I understand and once I, you know, once we get into that process where we actually sit down with you guys, but we meet with the principals beforehand, then we bring them in to meet with you. And so I like the process, we're in the process. But the process, the structure of the process, the actual, is, is, is really designed and developed by Kathy. So I sort of feel like I, you know, in, in that area, I have to be a little bit more humble than, than proficient. I, I think I'm developing. That's, that's my own self eval.
Mr. Chair.
I appreciate that comment. It's very thoughtful and we do rely on Kathy as our business manager. However, I feel like there's nothing wrong with leading with your strengths and where you have areas that maybe you're not an expert, that's why you hire people to be experts in those areas. And you acknowledge that and you bring her in and she leads with that strength and you let her lead there. So when we navigate that process, you do very well together collaboratively. So I appreciate that effort. And you're not going to be strong in every area, but as long as you know where your strengths lie and you optimize them, I think that's also leaderly and proficient. So, thank you.
Other comments? Mr. Steve.
I also agree with my colleagues here that two B is where you're shining in my eyes. I gave you exemplary on that as well and proficient and everything else. I think this is your real strong suit. And the interviewing teachers, sitting down with everybody that's hired, I think that's, that's impressive. But I also like, I think one meeting you explained your questioning and how you make sure that the candidates understand the values that the Middleborough Public Schools have. And I think that's just a real strong commitment to that personnel development. So I want to-
Core values.
Core values, yep. And I just, yeah, it's exemplary, I think people could learn from you on that.
Then given what was said, the chair would entertain a motion that the superintendent for standard two management and operations be ranked proficient.
So moved.
Second.
Second?
Discussion. Again, I'll ask you, does that make sense to you, Mr. Lynch?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Thank you. Standard number three, family and community engagement.
Chair.
Yes.
Going through your self eval and I, I disagree with you on a couple of things, but I understand, I'm looking at it from a different lens. I, I think that, I, I don't know if that reach-out, community reach-out beyond all the other things that you do, including rotary, which is going to come up in another comment that I make, a good thing, all the other things. Is there, is there something more that others might be doing that reach-out? Whether it's a superintendent's corner or you tweet, you tweets that, you know, things like that, I don't know if there's more, but I don't know the answer to that either because I get the Friday flashes, I get all that communication, so, and I seem to, I get more information than others do publicly. So I, I don't know who's getting beyond that. And I know that our administrators are all doing it. So they're getting information out, but I don't know if there's something more. I, I don't have an answer to that, but that's something to maybe look at as a, a developing opportunity, is the way to put it. I don't want to call it needs improvement, but I'd call it a developing opportunity that may be something to look at in the future. That was, that was my only, but I believe I'm, I'm a staunch proficient on this, this whole subject, this whole grouping of family and community engagement.
If I could add to that, I have you marked clearly as proficient in this area. I do want to start out with saying that I have you marked exemplary in family concerns. I think when a family has an issue, you are extraordinarily proactive and start the process immediately. I know in other cases where you've realized things that have gone on and the family hasn't contacted the district, you've reached out immediately to let them know what was going on and I think that's fantastic. I, I do agree with Brian though, for the communication piece. And it struck me as, as the, the, the piece that, it was in, it was the wording of that particular piece and it said engages in regular two-way communication. And so I, I, I think we've spent a lot of time doing communication this year around the high school because that's been the focus of our attention. But I agree, I think maybe we can work on a way to regularly communicate, as you said, superintendent's corner or something like that, that gives people, I know you've started with the, you've become a tweeter. So I know that's, so I just-
With my friend Sean Sossely.
Right, absolutely. So that's the, that's the piece that I, I raise with that particular piece.
Mr. Chair, I saw as part of this, I saw the two school committee meetings we have a month where we're in front in the camera and there are comprehensive reports on a regular basis from each member of the district administration, letting people know as global as we possible.
I do want to start out with saying that I have you marked exemplary in family concerns. I think when a family has an issue, you are extraordinarily proactive and start the process immediately. I know in other cases where you've realized things that have gone on and the family hasn't contacted the district, you've reached out immediately to let them know what was going on, and I think that's fantastic. I do agree with Brian though, for the communication piece. And it struck me as the piece that, it was the wording of that particular piece, and it said engages in regular two-way communication. And so I think we've spent a lot of time doing communication this year around the high school because that's been the focus of our attention. But I agree, I think maybe we can work on a way to regularly communicate, as you said, superintendent's corner or something like that, that gives people, I know you've started with the, you've become a tweeter. So I know that's not, so I just...
With my friend Sean Cecilia.
Right, absolutely. So that's the piece that I raise with that particular piece.
Mr. Chair, I saw as part of this, I saw the two school committee meetings we have a month, where we're in front in the camera, and there are comprehensive reports on a regular basis from each member of the district administration, letting people know as global as we possibly can what is going on in our school system, trying to recognize those individuals who should be recognized, trying to honor those individuals who should be honored, but also trying to inform folks about innovation and educational things that we're doing curriculum-wise. I saw part of that communication not so much in a blog form, or a tweet form, or an email form. I saw it more in this sort of, this is an opportunity. If you want to tune in and watch what's going on in the school system, all you have to do is tune into any school committee meeting, and you'll get some information that you can take with you with regard to an improving school system. So that's my own opinion of that three C. And that's how I sort of look at it and read it. But I do appreciate the fact that, you know, maybe there is, all our principals are doing blogs now, maybe there is a blog or something like that that I can do. Coffee with the principal, I don't drink coffee, but something like that, certainly.
No, but I, you know, I think from my perspective, that's great feedback to me because I guess when we live school committee meetings, I don't view it that way. And that's because we live it all the time. And so I completely agree with you, which is that we really work hard to set these things up so people get a window on what goes on, and that makes sense to me.
Mr. Chair, can I add to that comment? I think for that element, three C in communication, regular two-way communication, it talks about the concept of community stakeholders. I'm thinking of the Rotary race, the Elks, the Middleborough Police Department, the Middleborough Fire Department, informal and formal conversations that take place with, you know, at this different sporting events, you know, where you're there kind of being that example of this is Middleborough, this is our students, and this is achievement on a soccer field, this is achievement at an AP rally. So that's kind of, for me, what I took out of that element, and I aligned and checked proficient in that element. The one question I had is in the element three B where you, the sharing responsibility. You rated yourself as needs improvement or developing in that particular area. So I wanted to hear a little bit from you about that piece, like what about that element you felt like?
See, I see that more of, and maybe that's where Brian was pointing with regard to continuously collaborating with families and community stakeholders to support student learning and development at home, school, and community. That, to me, is more of that sort of superintendent leadership with regard to where we are in the curriculum and what we can do. I do encourage certainly our principals to do this on a regular basis. They do it on a regular basis. But in terms of as an individual superintendent, as part of my entry plan, I did talk with a lot of families and a lot of community stakeholders. I still meet on a regular basis with some of our chiefs and town manager and billing manager and continue to work on that. But this is an area, what I see, that is there an opportunity where I could get families in particular and help them support learning and how I do that as a superintendent. So I think I look for ways to do that, and that's why I think I'm developing in that area.
Mr. Chair?
Yes?
Through you. I'm asking you these types of questions because as school committee, I think it's important for us to understand where are the areas you want to focus on so that we help support those moving forward into the next year? Because we know if we support you, that's supporting high student achievement, which is the mission and one of the ultimate goal of the school committee. So thank you for indulging me in these questions.
No, Mr. Stevens?
Proficient is a good rating in this area, and I made also notes in my comments about you're at almost every event, you know, that happens. And I think I saw you at Crazy Days too, for the booth. So I mean, I definitely think you're out there, and that's proficient in my gut.
Any other comments? Then hearing what the chair's heard from other members of the committee, the chair will entertain a motion to rate the superintendent proficient in standard three, family and community engagement.
So moved?
Second?
Discussion.
I appreciate the comments, and again, does that make sense to you, Mr. Lynch?
That we rated you for mission?
And I appreciate, I very much appreciate as we go through this, the back and forth because, as I said, you know, I don't think of school committee meetings that way. And when you said it that way, it changed my opinion of that. So I really appreciate that. I think that makes a lot of sense. So thank you.
Standard number four, professional culture. Mr. Stevens?
Yeah, I agreed. I think proficient in the overall category is what I gave. And the one area, I think it's just, again, lack of, I don't see any in our meetings, I don't see it presented, is the continuous learning piece, four D. And that's just the self-reflective, staff members reflective about their practice. Like, that might be happening, but we just don't, I just don't have evidence of that. But in other words, I think I do see your dedication to setting high standards, sharing your vision. And, you know, I think that's, I think you're proficient in this area overall.
Mr. Chair?
Ms. Franco?
So I would agree in this content area, I think you're proficient overall. I think in the two areas where I felt like you're emerging and developing would be the continuous learning, which is D, and the managing conflict. And I think similar to Mr. Stevens, I felt in these two spaces, and I wrote, examples would be helpful here. And I actually circled some of the items that they list below as examples of evidence because it's quite possible that item F, managing conflict, that you're doing some things. It sounds like you also align to needing some development in this area. So maybe better understanding what that is would help us to support you. I circled things like presentations and materials for community parent meetings, maybe some evidence of that and something we could support you in. And then samples of leadership team agendas and materials. I know we get a lot of feedback about your meetings, but maybe kind of seeing some things and things in your packet. And then I circled other, like what kind of documents are there? What ways could you demonstrate to us that you're managing conflict? And that's harder for me, so I'll put that over to you. But overall, I rated this category as proficient as well.
I also rated this category proficient. I would like to point out that the area in which I gave you exemplary is the shared vision. And one of the reasons, a couple of reasons why is, as you put in this, is the strategy for continuous district improvement. And then seeing this plan work out in each of the school improvement plans and have to become a part of the school improvement plans shows that, you know, your administrative team's on the same page and pushes everything towards there. That doesn't happen all the time. And, you know, and Greg and I laughed when we went to the summer workshop for MASC when we sit there and we go, we hear other people talking and go, oh, we don't have it so bad. And, you know, and you hear people say, going back to a point that you made, we had a woman come up to us and say, can I ask you a question about budget? And I said, certainly. She goes, my superintendent gives me the budget and tells me what we're going to vote on. And I'm like, no, no, we don't do that. What do you mean? We get everybody's requests, we don't get to see requests from people. Just tell them, just ask for them because that's your role. And it's a funny, how do you get to do that? And so these are things that we see, we get to be a part of, and maybe to some extent, we take for granted. But it's not the way it is in the world, and I really appreciate that.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Up until about six, seven years ago, that may not have been the way it was done here either.
Mr. Chair?
Yes?
So I just, I do want to hear from you, Brian, about the two categories where you rated yourself as developing, emerging, so D and E, kind of share back with us maybe.
Sure. Well, D reads develops and nurtures a culture in which staff members are reflective about their practice and use student data, current research, best practices, and theory to continuously adapt practice and achieve improved results, models these behaviors in own practice. I put that as a developing, as a needs improvement because I think that our students can do better. I think we can achieve at a higher level. And I don't see that as improving as quickly as it probably should or might. I see some improvements in certain areas. I see others, and we're going to be talking on November ninth about MCAS results and MCAS data. I'm concerned in a number of areas. I'm impressed in a few areas. But the fact that overall, I think we should be doing more, and I think we should be taking those results and taking the money we pay for Renaissance and Scantron and being able to analyze that, I know it's being done at the elementary level, and I know improvements have been seen. So I just see that as an area that we as a district, and I'm the leader of the district, we can improve upon, and we need to improve upon. And these plans, school improvement plans, need to be reflective. And if they're not, they need to go back to the drawing board and become reflective. And we've been through that exercise, standing here or sitting here. And that needs to happen. It's just not, we write a school improvement plan and it comes before us. I need to sit down and review. The school improvement plans are developed by school councils, and I get that. But the school principals need to know that this is where your school should be going, and this is what you need to focus on. So I think that's my piece of that culture, developing and nurturing that culture. I need to do more, so I feel I'm developing in that area. With regard to managing conflict, there are things that I could do better there. There are, you know, personnel and issues that come up, and I think I need to be more constructive in resolving those conflicts and working towards the future and getting better results from folks that I might be concerned about. So I do think that that's something that is developing. And I do think that's, I don't think, like I said, you know, you said you wanted to point out these two where it needs improvement. I think, like I said, I want to see it as something that, I'm in my, really, my, beginning of my third year here, and I think it's still developing in that area.
Thank you so much.
Yeah.
Any other comments? And given what the committee has said, the chair would entertain a motion to rate the superintendent proficient for standard number four, professional culture. So here, second.
Second?
Discussion. Again, I'll turn to you, Mr. Lynch. Does that make sense to you?
Good with that.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's again unanimous. Chair will turn your attention, as soon as I flip the page, to page, I can't remember.
Three of seven.
Yeah, three of seven, minus B four, it's goals. The superintendent has four goals that I want to go over. It's actually four. And thankfully, I have handouts for everybody. And I'll go over each of the goals, okay? The goal...
Goal number four, not go through?
No, I think Ann put the old, the old listing on the Dropbox, the previous one. So just so everyone knows...
I apologize for that.
No, no problem. Goal number one, under professional practice, effective entry and direction setting. By the spring of 2017, the Middleborough Public Schools will have broad agreement...
Yes, we're in there.
Okay. But there's one less.
Yeah, okay.
There's no five.
Right.
Okay. That make sense to everybody? Everyone have the same?
There is no five.
There is no five. So one is the effective entry setting.
Yep.
Spring, okay? Does everybody have that one? Wait till you... What?
Just trying to decode.
Okay, no problem.
I think five was the last, Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
I think the confusing piece may be the order in which we looked at them via the superintendent's self eval. I evald the same way as he did.
Yeah.
They do, the four items, it's still the four items. It's just, you slid it onto other.
Got it. So the first one is the effective entry direction setting. I marked the superintendent as significant progress in that.
Are we just going down the line?
Yeah.
I also marked for significant progress, not for that goal.
For effective entry and direction setting? Brian?
Significant progress.
I'm sorry, I'm still decoding.
No problem.
Our number one, okay. Yeah, I said significant progress.
Okay. Chair would entertain a motion to rank the superintendent at significant progress.
So moved?
Second?
Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? I should say, again, I apologize to the people in the audience. This has a different ranking system. This one has did not meet, some progress, significant progress, met, and exceeded. So professional practice, goal number two is the new superintendent induction program. This is, he's in the second year of the induction program, and I had put met, that goal.
I also put met.
Me too.
Chair will entertain a motion to mark the superintendent as met.
So moved?
Second?
Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Yes?
I'd just like to step back one piece on that effective entry. I did want to comment that, I did have a comment in there that I had written that I, this is where more of my comments are because the way things fall, but, "Mr. Lynch continues to work with key personnel to develop district-wide programs from new employee to handbook and professional development. Your union contract work has been exemplary." Absolutely have been. Just the union contract piece alone, working with you has been phenomenal, great to work with. I had more comments here than I did in the back pieces, but that was...
No, please, if you have more comments, go right ahead. If you want to say anything, I just, I was the opposite. The...
Item three?
Yeah, the next, oh, sorry. I did exactly what we just talked about. Number three is maintaining momentum during the transition. Keep the district moving forward this year in leadership and working with principals and district leaders to ensure that meaningful progress is made on critical and school goals. I marked this as some progress.
I also marked this as some progress.
I was a little stronger on this one. I see that you've guided our district through this transition process. And you come in as a transition process, Mr. Lynch, but you came into a transition process that was going on district-wide, even with administration. The dust has been settling around you, and you're guiding us through that, which is great because we needed that. The, you're gaining momentum. And when I see those school choice requests come in each time, I think to myself, you're doing something really right. Everyone is, but you're leading. When I think of that, that student learning is part of it. And then I think of the project, the big project that's ongoing right now, and how that momentum is still moving, which is good. So that's why I had it as, that you've met some of those goals. I'm sure you have new goals to meet too, next time. But that was one that I thought was, I was a little stronger on it, but...
Mr. Stevens?
I agree with Mr. Givernoni. I actually put met on this goal. I feel that, you know, just my interactions with Mr. Lynch, I feel like his momentum is gaining speed. And as he gets more well-grounded and established, I see him pushing the momentum. So I just gave, I gave it a met.
Well, no, I mean, again, this is where we have to vote.
Do we have, sorry, Mr. Chair, do we have to actually vote this? Can we leave them as individual?
No.
No?
We are required to vote. So I will accept the motion. Mr. Chair? Oh, Greg, excuse me, Greg, you had a question?
I'm just saying, even though it's two to two, I guess, I'm comfortable with it defaulting down to the significant progress. Like, I think that's okay with me.
I would move that significant progress be the ranking for the item three.
I was going to tell you I'm fine with moving out. Whatever way, I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion. Again, are you fine with that? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Significant progress, right? That's what we voted?
Yeah.
Thank you. And the last one is superintendent schools, school committee communication. Maintains communication between superintendent schools and the school committee. I wrote down met.
I also wrote down met.
Great.
Well, I actually wrote down exceeded. I feel, Mr. Lynch, I mean, it's a weekly email that's very detailed. I know his schedule probably better than I know my schedule on that email. He does such a nice job. Every time I have a question, he's there to answer it. I just feel we're fortunate to have such an open, like Rich was mentioning. I had one person I talked to that their superintendent was just at loggerheads with the school committee. The superintendent wouldn't give them any information. And we are fortunate to be in a situation, so, I mean, my vote... are fortunate to be in a situation, so, I mean, my vote is exceeded.
I would say this, that I agree with everything you said, and I, I have no problem with that. The way I looked at it was, I put met, because I thought this went the same way as it did last year.
Yeah.
You know, and that's all. It just, it just went on from last year and continued, and it just, it met. So, that's all.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I think that through that Friday Flash email and the use, using the chair to pass him, you know, sensitive information on to us, as you have in the past, as I've said, I feel in the loop at all times. I'm not surprised by items. I feel like I'm in the loop. So, that was a big thing. There's nothing worse than getting a call from someone saying, "Hey, what about this?" And you're saying, huh? You're keeping us in the loop, and that's a big piece of the communication. As well as other items, whether it comes from Kathy with different things that she'll send out, or through Ann, everything we get, you're making sure it gets to us, which I appreciate.
The chair would then entertain a motion.
I'd move that we go with met onto item four.
Second.
Discussion. Are you fine with that?
I'm fine with that. I do feel I met, in terms of Mr. Stevens' comments about exceeded, maybe compared to other communities, perhaps. But my goal was to do those things, and I did them, and the met. Now, if we want to expand that to include more, or reduce it to reflect less, that's fine. But I think the Friday Flash should always be continued. I think the calendar events on the website and the improvement on the website, although not personally responsible, is definitely an improvement in terms of being able to go on that website and find anything you want that's beyond the Friday Flash, anything in the school system, for the most part. So, I feel I did, I'm under the met category, and I'm fine with that. Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Just a reflection on that. I, I think the Friday Flash and the other emails are just right. You know, it's the Goldilocks. I think if he gave us more, it'd almost be too much, you know, too much information. So, I think it's just right. I like the style that you have. I like the, the level of information you give us. I think it's just right.
Tried to give you a little laugh at the end.
And a little laugh. Then, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Okay. Then, if we go to page one, everyone, and we look at the step one, assess progress towards goals. If I look at professional practice, which would include effective entry.
We just do that.
What?
Didn't we just do that?
No, what I'm saying now is I have to, we have to give an overall, I'm just making sure we're all on the same page.
Okay.
Which would include effective entry and superintendent induction program. See, this is the one that I just want to be sure on. Everything else you've told me makes, fills neatly into category. And for effective entry, we gave him significant progress, and.
And there's a second professional practice.
Right. Then, we gave him met.
Right. So, number one is significant, number two is met.
So, that's why I need, for the overall, I need a vote on that particular one, if ever. So, it's either significant, I would view it as significant progress or met, and I would leave it up to the committee to make a motion.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Under professional practice, I would, I would move that we use significant progress for that professional practice and goals.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Lynch, again, are you fine with that?
That's fine.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. And then, I will ask everyone to turn to page three. Everything else we filled in. The page three is the overall summary. And so, we have to choose an overall ranking for the superintendent?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Under step three?
I would move that the rate, the overall summative, summative performance for the superintendent of schools as proficient.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And then, I would ask under step four, for the committee to vote on the rate, the impact on student learning. And we have the three choices, which is low, moderate, or high.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I would move that the superintendent be rated for impact on student learning as high.
Second. I'll second. Discussion.
Mr. Chair, I will say that the reason why I had high is, I think of, I think of that momentum. I think of what I mentioned before about, we were in a, we were in a administrative revolving door, and the dust is settling, and, and keeping us moving forward, progressing forward, and, and, and he's really riding that ship right now. And I really appreciate that his work. That's why, when I think of all that work, it all goes back to that student achievement piece and the student learning. That's why I had the high, and I think about it as that. And that, it wasn't looking at just individual things in the back of this. It was, that was the first gut reaction. I think of every piece as a whole, you know, how does, in his effect. That's how I came up with that one myself. I guess it wasn't an add and a subtract for me, like I usually do as an engineer, but it was more of that gut of, yeah, he does. So, I know that's not really a, probably the best way to do it, but that was really how I felt.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I actually checked moderate for this element, and not, maybe for different reasons than Brian, not for lack of enthusiasm and overarching broader vision and strategy and bringing the district together, but just because I think in that particular category, when you think of student learning, I do think we have a road to go. And it's not a reflection of you, it's a reflection of time and role. And I think you need some more time to really pull everything through that you have set forth under the vision with your team. So, that's why I chose moderate in this category for today. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Yes.
I also ranked high. I feel like the superintendent sets the tone very well to all the principals, and it just goes down from there. And I, I think the culture of the schools is reflective of Mr. Lynch's efforts. And I just feel that those, that has to have a high impact, in my view.
There's a motion on the table to rank the superintendent high. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Do you abstain from this, or do you need like?
You can. Oh, let's put it this way. There's several options on the table, okay? And I throw these options. One is you can abstain. One is you can vote, and then you could ask the committee to reconsider, and so that you can vote unanimously with, with the entire committee after having voted whichever way you wanted in the first place.
Okay, so I can vote what I put on my paper?
Yes.
And then I can ask the committee?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, so I will vote nay on this?
Okay. So, it's three to one?
And then, could, do I make a motion to reconsider?
You can ask to reconsider, because you have to been the prevailing side.
Okay. Can I reconsider? Can you reconsider?
Say motion to reconsider.
Motion to reconsider.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor of reconsideration say aye.
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 Opposed? It's unanimous.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I'd move that we rank, rate the impact on student learning as high.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Totally.
We reconsidered.
We're reconsidering.
It's like you're on the record.
Oh, we voted to reconsider, now we're voting, okay.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? It's unanimous. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I understand more comments with regard to that, that rating, because I do feel that we, we are just finishing up the, the strategy for continuous district improvement, the action plans. And there's a lot of great things in store and moving forward. But I also appreciate certainly the, the votes for high, too. We are.
Chair?
Yep.
We have a space for the overall comments. Could I do that, or no?
You can, but my plan is not to add overall comments, only because I'm gonna take whatever you have and attach that and include that. You may, you can, you can add anything that you want now for an overall comment.
That's it?
But everything will be added, too.
I understand this whole packet's gonna get into a packet, which is into a packet, and then, but I just feel like, I feel strongly I'd like to share my thoughts.
Please, absolutely.
All right. So, this is the step five, add evaluated comments, just, just overall summative rating. Here, I said, "Mr. Lynch continues to be a strong leader at, for the Middleborough Public Schools. It doesn't take long to realize how much he values the schools and the community of Middleborough. I continue to be impressed by the communications he maintains, not only with the school committee, which is, has been excellent, but also with the schools and the public. Whenever a problem arises, he always meets it head-on, and he has the safety and welfare of our children in the forefront of his thoughts and actions. Middleborough is fortunate to have him, Mr. Lynch, at our MPS helm."
Chair?
Yes.
I have some comments, too, I'd like to read. That, "Mr. Lynch has made a significant impact on the district through his hiring process, to his presence in whatever room he is in throughout the district and the community. He's in the community, not just the district. He belongs to the Rotary, is active in his church and other organizations. People are commenting in positive ways about his presence. The rebranding of the district and the strategy for continuous district improvement was done collaboratively and is what we needed. He is surrounded by great staff that want to do great things, and I see smiling faces everywhere in the district and at all levels of staffing." Thank you.
I do want to say, before we finish this again, I can't imagine in your position how difficult this is. You know, you're, you're being evaluated out in the public and on TV and everything like that. But I do want to say how I believe all of us are pleased to have you here. You know, I get to do certain things with you as chair. You and I will walk the halls. I'm constantly amazed with the number of kids who come up to you and have conversations with you, with the number of staff that have conversations with you, the ability to remember everybody's name, which at some point in my life I hope to have, but I know I never will. It's, it's, it's a wonderful feeling. And when I started on this board, that feeling didn't exist. And I think that's important for people to know, and it has been a wonderful, wonderful experience. So, I thank you for that, and look forward to working with you in the future.
Mr. Chair, I just, I have, because I didn't make, read my comments, I just want to echo that. You're a tremendous leader for the district, and you've come really far in the first couple of years, few years that you've been in the district. And I think the board looks forward, and your administrative team, to continuing to help you grow and develop, and to continue to support all of the success that you've had. So, thank you.
I do want to say, and I should have pointed this out before, and I apologize, Megan. When Megan came to the board, this is really for a period in time that ends fiscal year, which is June 30. And so, Megan had only really been on the board for two months at that point. And Greg went through this last year, so it's hard for people to evaluate. So, we sort of set aside for the first time. Meg will be a, a big part of the evaluation this year, and so, we thank you for that. And I didn't want to exclude you, and I apologize. I should have said that before. I would point out to the committee, first of all, I have to get my legal obligations out of the way. Anything you use tonight for paperwork is actually required to be given to me, and I will add this to the review. The second thing I want the committee to be aware of, and, and just make sure we're all in agreement, after looking at the superintendent's evaluation contractually, he is allowed a raise after a successful evaluation by this committee. I view this evaluation as successful, and so I will put on next meeting's agenda, a raise for the superintendent of schools as within his contract. Okay?
For discussion.
Yes.
With respect to the super, with respect to the superintendent's contract, have we received any correspondence from the superintendent regarding his desire to continue here in Middleborough?
No, not as of yet, but it was my intention to ask the superintendent and bring it up at next meeting. Thank you. Any further discussion? Does that make sense to the committee? Okay, thank you. Mr. Lynch, anything else under superintendent's report?
I have nothing else. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Just quickly, because this is the longest, we've been here for a while. MSBA update, I, I mentioned some of the issues beforehand. I do want to make mention that several of us met with MSBA on October 6. We had a very productive meeting. We went over a variety of things. I will add that the numbers that we presented to town meeting actually are well within range. And I say well within range, because it looks like we may be eligible for more money than we had presented at town meeting from MSBA in the form of a couple of hundred thousand dollars more if we meet certain levels.
Close to seven hundred thousand.
Seven hundred thousand dollars more, and that's in amongst the contingency numbers. So, that's in addition to what we put out before. So, it would be less for the townspeople.
Continue to work hard, though.
What?
Yes.
Mr. Chair, as, as we were discussing earlier, it's that continual hard work of the committee and the subcommittees to, you know, wring out every dollar from the state that we can, in the good way.
Yes, absolutely. I would remind everybody, the town election is November 4. And no matter what your viewpoint, please come out and vote, because it's important for community members to come out and vote. There is an MSBA board meeting on October 25, which is next week. The full board will be voting the Middleborough proposal to put it, to align it within the monetary figures that we've set up. We have an understanding currently that as and when we left that meeting, they were gonna, we had to make a couple of minor changes to a couple of documents, nothing to do with the budget, but more to do with some, how space was allotted and then, in name. And so, they were gonna plan to do that.
Mr. Chair, on the floor plans, the futures program is labeled as a special needs program. Their request was to take it out of that realm, and because it's not specifically a special needs program, and label it as just regular space, classroom space, which has been done now. There are also some asks with regard to the, the special education plan at the high school, the outline for the high school. It had to be changed to reflect the futures out and a couple of other things in. I know that Mr. Brandigan and Jen Healy, who's the sped facilitator at the high school, worked on that and were able to complete that document, that document. And others will be submitted to the Department of Ed tomorrow. Christine Lynch is the director of that program. She's no relation. I do have Christine Lynch as a sister, but this is not the Christine Lynch. And then, there's another document that goes to the MSBA. So, we go in on the 25th of October and meet with that board once again to get final approval. And then, obviously, the November 4 date is another date that's coming up very quickly.
And as the, just so everyone knows, that the relabeling of the futures program came from DESC, not, not from MSBA. So, I think that's important.
There's a member of the board that approves or does not approve a project, and the member of the board is a, is a member of the staff of the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. So, that board member makes specific requests of that plan, and pointed that out as part of his due diligence, pointed that out, so.
So, everything's proceeding very well with the high school. Any questions about the high school? The MECC?
Mr. Hutchinson's still here. MECC, we're all set at the MECC, right? We, we pointed the chimney, we put a cap on it.
The two issues that we had, they.
Grab the mic, Mr. Hutch.
The company that did the roof project, they gave us a price on it. It was quite large, so we've gone with a local contractor. He's pointed the chimney, sealed it, two coats of sealer, and custom fitted a cap for the top. The cupola, we have yet to get rain, so rain that has come through. We had the two storms that came up that were remnants of those hurricanes, and we didn't get a drop of rain. So, the plan moving forward is when, with the custodians there, if they see any rain, then we'll, the maintenance staff will go there that time, open the ceiling, and see where it's coming from. But we haven't gotten a drop of rain from that. But the chimney is done, so we're in the process of closing out that project.
So, Mr. Chair, other than comedic effect, could we possibly take off?
Right.
What should we remove?
My, my dream will come true. So, thank you very much. You will not see that again on the agenda. We're removing it from now. And, Mr. Hutchinson, I can't tell you how pleased I am to remove that from the agenda.
Yeah, you want me to?
So, to, to sort of put a cap on it, that we, our OPM on that project is a group called ACG out in Bedford, and we're gonna have a final meeting with them to submit the final paperwork to the MSBA, significant, signifying the end of that, official end of that program.
Yes, and it could take up until next spring to, for the board of MSBA to close us that way.
But to be clear, on that program, can you?
Next spring, we'll come back and tell you how much money we save.
Right, exactly. But we are considerable amount under budget.
We have $250,000.
$250,000, yes. Two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, yes. Under budget.
Thank you, thank you. I can't emphasize enough how much I'm enjoying this. MSA, MSC, MAS, Fall Conference, November first through fourth. I remind committee members who are interested in going, uh, that that's, um, that it's about to close, so if for some reason you can make it, uh, please go. Uh, subcommittee assignments we talked about before, which we're gonna wait till we get a new member. I, uh, and I'll sign people as we go if we need something particularly done. I would point out to, um, the community again, they can go online and apply, or anyone is more than welcome to call, my number's in the book. If you have questions about it, I'd be more than happy to talk to you about the school community position. Uh, that'll be a group, uh, decision between us and the selectmen, um, and we'll go from there. Uh, all that, all that the chair has is consent agenda.
Would you approve the consent agenda?
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Chair will entertain a motion to adjourn, and just so the, uh, community knows, we will not be meeting the first, uh, Thursday in November, because that, we're away at the conference. But we'll actually meet Thursday, November ninth, back here at two thousand seventeen, and we'll go from there.
Motion to adjourn?
Second?
Second.
Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Thank you very much.